There we go. They got, everything's sneaky.
No, we've brought a lot of, a lot of shirts, a lot of members here multiple times. So this is not the first time we've ever done this.
Yeah.
And it won't be the last time we ever do it because, yeah, we're here, so.
You guys go to JCPark? You don't even look at my YouTube channel, so you don't know what's going on.
Okay.
Right? You don't even, you can't even go on YouTube.
Well, I'm not doing this anymore, so I'm talking to me when you're talking.
Oh, oh, okay. So, see. That guy's sneaky over there. He doesn't want, he first he was asking you stuff, then he didn't want to talk to me. Hey, you guys gotta keep an eye on this place. He hasn't even looked at my YouTube channel. Well, yeah, we would, but you gotta get out, you gotta get out, you gotta be around. Alright, that guy's dirty, man. So you don't know, right? That guy's dirty, no, he's signaling you or something, not talking to me.
I guess I'm, at this point, I'm gonna have to refuse any comment.
No, 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 I mean, I'm telling you.
You know, I don't know what, what you're talking about and what you're referring to.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, wake up, what's going on in the town? Dude, you're fake too, aren't you? You're incurious, man, look at this. I didn't say you know somebody, I'm telling you, you don't know. Like, you know I'm asserting.
We have no comment about anything that you're talking about.
I know, like.
Absolutely no comment, like I told you earlier.
Yeah, it's us with it.
Yeah, but just, yeah, we have no comment on that. No comment whatsoever.
You got some sneaky dudes over there, they're up to stuff, you know? They chose on the camera, I start talking to them, and then it's, you know, the guy gets something in his ear.
Alright dude, I'll talk to you later, I gotta go to Tallahassee now.
Tallahassee. Other Tallahassee. So who, who is that guy? Who, who are you?
Who am I?
Yeah, going up to Tallahassee, right?
Yeah.
They just got done with Patty Cummings, they sent that, got rid of that, right?
I have no idea.
Oh, they said she's fine.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Alright, there we go. Oh yeah. This thing could be a. That's why he's not in on it as much, that cop is like a lot cleaner than when he said. He's, he's like, he's like, you know what I mean, right? He's like a little bit more clean. Alright, this guy. This guy just backing up into the camera. No, I got it on film, man. And this guy, this guy, this guy. Oh, this guy's gotta do his thing, see? Because this guy's dirty, look at him, he's got some sneaky thing. So what is, what is it, what is exactly? You thought I was the one to comment, I don't need a comment, okay? I wanna say stuff and look your face or whatever.
I, I told, I told you, I have told you multiple times.
If I have to, I'll talk to this guy. I'll put the camera, I'll face it on you, and we'll talk to him.
I have told you multiple times, there's no reason to talk to us, and I don't wanna talk to you.
Oh, but you still gotta back into the camera, you gotta talk to this guy?
Yeah, but.
Alright, ye wretched of thee. Oh, it's not windy here. Oh no. It's like, oh, now it's too windy again. This video's gonna suck, man, it's gonna suck. I know this guy's coming back. He's like lying, man, he ain't gonna come here. He's like gotta be the guard. There we go. See, that's how you do it. Yeah.
Is that good for you?
Yeah, that's where you go, I got you get it, you walking out of the frame. And then you swing. You know what I mean, like, uh, like, who's the director that, um? So what is it, man? No, like, I'm from Boston and stuff, you know? Let me see. Great, there we go. Ah, they got someone on there, too. Yeah, these aren't good.
How are you, sir?
How are, how are you? Ah, there we go. They're not with a thing, see? There we go. Um, I gotta do these guys, you guys aren't really with the thing, you know, like, you don't come here a lot, right? Let me get you a little bit. Are you a T- great, okay?
I just, I was wondering why you were videoing.
Do you watch my YouTube?
No, I, I have not.
Okay, look up Cape Coral City Council on YouTube, just set it by date if you're not finding it, I got, I tear this thing open, man. They got some group spinning, guys. They got, everything's sneaky.
No, we, we brought a lot of, a lot of shirts, a lot of members here multiple times. So this is not the first time we've ever done this.
Yeah.
And it won't be the last time we ever do it.
Yes.
Yeah, we're here, so.
You guys go to JCPark? So, so what happened, you just stopped talking or whatever, what's going on?
I'm not that I was just there.
Tell me some stuff, man, okay? What, so what, what's up with you guys, like, why, why, um, so are you one of the union, top union guys or something?
No.
Cause you know, you guys, you guys gotta be getting played, you know? It's, um, you know what goes on here, right? You don't even look at my YouTube channel, so you don't know what's going on.
Okay.
Right? You don't even, you can't even go on YouTube.
Well, I'm not doing this anymore, so I'm talking to me when you're talking.
Oh, oh, okay. So, so. So it's just the police and, uh, all that, what, what kind of union, what do you guys work, what kind of work do you guys do? That guy's sneaky, man. That guy's sneaky over there. He doesn't want, he first he was asking you stuff, then he didn't want to talk to me. Hey, you guys gotta keep an eye on this place. He hasn't even looked at my YouTube channel. Well, well, yeah, we would, but you gotta get out, you gotta get out, you gotta be around. Okay, okay, do, do, it's like Losit Crumb, look on my, that's my YouTube name.
What's your name?
Um, I don't wanna say it right now. You know, I look at, the cops like, you can look me up on the internet. You can like, they dog me, man. I do the police down here, I did the police backup in Boston, um, look at, look at my YouTube channel. Um, Losit Crumb.
It's a little token there, duh.
That's what we do, like, what else, hey, so what, what kind of work do you all do?
We work for the city, I'm in, uh, soils department, storm water. I'm on storm water.
Okay, do you mind, you don't mind talking to me, do you?
I, if we're doing an interview, I would like to know what we're talking about and what you're, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
In relationship with.
Not just you, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, like, my YouTube channel, look me up, Losit Crumb, or just set, set, take Cape Coral City Council on YouTube, on your computer, cause it fucks it around on the phone, and you set it by date, you'll see all this, boom, 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 I did Patty Cummings, you know, she was supposed to be kicked out of here, that was, that was day it set her up, they set the whole thing up, man.
Give me a second.
Uh-oh. Not allowed to talk to me. Alright, that guy's dirty, man. So you don't know, right? That guy's dirty, no, he's signaling you or something, not talking to me. Dude, you gotta, you got, you guys are gonna get played, man. So you guys, like, you're not with a thing. This whole, everything is locked up here in this town, you guys just gotta keep an eye on it. You had, he, he said you didn't even look at my YouTube channel, what?
I guess I'm, at this point, I'm gonna have to refuse any comment.
No, 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 I mean, I'm telling you.
With me, you know, I don't know what, what you're talking about and what you're referring to.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, wake up, what's going on in the town? Dude, you're fake too, aren't you? You're incurious, man, look at this. Oh, come on, man. That's your guys, man. That's not gonna work, man. You got the, 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 you got the police extortion running this place, you know? I didn't say you know somebody, I'm telling you, you don't know. Like, you know I'm asserting.
We have no comment about anything that you're talking about.
I know, like.
Absolutely no comment, like I told you earlier.
Yeah, it's us with it.
Yeah, but just, yeah, we, we have no comment on that. No comment whatsoever.
Yeah. So, so what are you, are you, are you elected or something?
You have the right to be here, I have the right to be here. But I have no comment on anything that you're asking.
You might be one of these guys in Boston. I deal with stuff that, you know. You guys, you know what you're like, you know, like in the teachers' union, which is the, the progressive, that's the thing, man, you know, the teachers' unions are good. Wait, let me get off track a little bit, yeah, oh, you first you say, I'm about to give you a comment, trying to give you some background. I'm not putting, I'm not gonna ask you for a comment. Worst I'm doing, I mean, I'm saying stuff and I'm, I'm recording your face, your reaction.
You're making comments with my face.
If, yeah, if you would turn your camera off.
This guy, this guy. This guy's, um, yeah, and then you.
You understand that, I don't know what you're talking about, so I, I can't, I can't support you comment.
You already, you're already, dude, you're already, you're, he's like, you got, it wasn't me, man, it's all like, I didn't set it up, man. You heard something in his ear, you talked in his ear or something, man. So, so are you elected or something?
No.
So you're just like in control? Do you guys ever do, oh. Man, you guys, come on, man.
I got more wine than why not.
Man. You got some sneaky dudes over there, they're up to stuff, you know? They chose on the camera, I start talking to them, and then it's, you know, the guy gets something in his ear. You guys just gotta be here, watch this stuff. Just watch it, you get situational awareness. Or like, somewhere, you gotta have all of you, because like, you don't know. You can't just like, you can't stand a representative until you have situational awareness, you know what I mean? Cause you don't fucking, you know? It's like this town is, um, you gotta know, everyone, what are they doing? Who is that, what, why? You know, every person you see, you know, is that, cause this town is, um, you know, right? You know, cause it's like, there is no other, this is like, um. Yeah. Yeah, that is some stuff. Oh damn, man. You guys are sneaky, man. Look at you, that naughty look on your face, man. Everyone has a naughty look on their face. Oh my god, man. Let me get this. Oh my god, you guys, you guys are so, these guys are. It's all like, it's all like the fix is in, right? You guys all have it all locked up, or someone does. They don't know. Yeah, let me get that one. Yeah. It does, yeah.
Alright, you guys ready?
Yeah, ready, we gotta go.
Yeah.
Have a good day, man.
Oh man, yeah, you guys, um, I know what you guys are up to. Damn, man. Wow. Alright, you guys, see, see you later. Let me get you guys, get the palm trees. I probably get sand. It's here.
Background, and maybe I don't have the ethics that you have when it comes to, uh, you know, cause you do have law enforcement background, and I don't.
Well, I, that's okay. They weren't out there, but they counted that. I don't know why they wouldn't count.
Have a good night, I think so, I hope. I don't know. We'll find out tomorrow when we wake up. Yeah, yeah, yeah. For your full code, code, code enforcement.
Yeah, my zone is cultural, going up to Hancock, Hancock to Pine Island, Pine Island to Skyline, Skyline down to Chicago, Chicago to Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara to Nicholas, and then back here.
That's a skater, dude. I'm not gonna get any sound here, I have too much room in here. Characters are suspicious.
Oh, that's right, that's what you just said. So, wait, I'm surprised.
There's no way.
Alright dude, I'll talk to you later, I gotta go to Tallahassee now.
Tallahassee. Other Tallahassee. So who, who is that guy? Who, who are you?
Who am I?
Yeah, going up to Tallahassee, right?
Yeah.
They just got done with Patty Cummings, they sent that, got rid of that, right?
I have no idea.
Oh, they said she's fine.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
They're not, yeah, oh, that was like they buried it in the newspaper, yeah, all dismissed. Yeah, yeah.
Have a good night, sir.
Alright. Gotta go up to Tallahassee. The boys in Tallahassee, the boys from Tallahassee. Aw, man, they got some sneaky stuff going on, man. Aw, man. Uh, yeah, man. Alright, there we go. Oh yeah. Yeah, we're back.
I'd like your advice.
Hey Bush, easy does it.
Hey, got paged. Oh, there's that guy. There goes this guy, check him out.
I gotta make a phone call, can I use your phone?
Yeah.
Real quick, you know, man?
Man, he just lied. God, man. Good thing it's good. This thing could be a. That's why he's not in on it as much, that cop is like a lot cleaner than when he said. He's, he's like, he's like, you know what I mean, right? He's like a little bit more clean. Alright, this guy. This guy just backing up into the camera. No, I got it on film, man. And this guy, this guy, this guy, so, so, so you like, no, man, I caught this stuff, man. Ask that, ask that guy, ask that guy. Unless you just, if you, like, I can't tell anymore, people just say it. I'm not getting much sound, it's all. Oh, this guy's gotta do his thing, see? Cause this guy's dirty, look at him, he's got some sneaky thing. So what is, what is it, what is exactly? You thought I was the one to comment, I don't need a comment, okay? I wanna say stuff and look your face or whatever.
I, I told, I told you, I have told you multiple times.
If I have to, I'll talk to this guy. I'll put the camera, I'll face it on you, and we'll talk to him.
I have told you multiple times, there's no reason to talk to us, and I don't wanna talk to you.
Oh, but you still gotta back into the camera, you gotta talk to this guy?
Yeah, but.
Listen dude, we got a private conversation here.
You had, no, you have every right to be here, so do you. This is a public space.
Private conversation, I mean, that's pretty rude. I think it's pretty rude that you would just come in and start videoing us while we're having a private conversation. See, that's pretty sad, actually.
Nah, you don't think that. You're not telling a truth, you don't think that. Dude, you don't have those kind of boundaries, man, you guys, you should, you should have, you're more, um, you broke on. True, man. This guy.
Again, congratulations, I'll see you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna use your, your name as a reference.
Keep the law code, man, rock and roll. Keep, keep the laws mode. See you, Ollie.
That's the easiest part.
So what is it, this guy's gotta stay though, right? That guy's gotta stay on guard. I gotta get, they're gonna get me out of the wind, it's too windy here, right? So fake. Get out of the way.
I'll give you my license plate if you want.
I'll give you my license plate if you want.
I gotta walk the other way, have a good night, Papa.
All right, you too. Oh, you guys are leaving? Okay, I was trying to get out of the wind too. Now, he's not leaving, man. He has to watch, he's like.
Dude, I got here in September.
The other side?
Is it the other side? Never been here before, so.
What, you've never been here before? Have you never been here before? What is it? Why do you have, everyone is so guilty here, they're so like ashamed, like, it's like, uh. Get used to it. I mean, how bad could it be, really, you know? Are you really going? It's all full, uh. Full of, um. Too much wind, there goes that guy over there. Oh, there. I don't think so. These are signals. Oh, they are. They ain't going fucking nowhere. Oh my god. Check it out, you got, I had the guy going over there, maybe he did park over there, that's a good place to park. Actually, you could, uh, there goes that guy. Man, what is it with these guys? They're so ashamed. This guy is like. Nah, you don't think that, you're lying. Look, man, that guy's gonna go way down there, see? Oof. Maybe parked down there. A lot of parking in here. Probably did. There's those guys. This guy ain't going nowhere. He's supposed to hang around. Uh. Arise, ye wretched of the earth. Oh, it's not windy here. Oh no. It's like, oh, no, it's too windy again. This video's gonna suck, man, it's gonna suck. I know this guy's coming back. He's like lying, man, he ain't gonna come here. He's like gotta be a guard. There we go. Yeah, that's how you do it. Yeah.
Is that good for you?
Yeah, that's where you go, guys, you get, you're walking out of the frame. And then you swing. You know what I mean, like, uh, like, who's the director that, um? So what is it, man? No, like, I'm from Boston and stuff. I've been around, I don't have any moral judgments, I think, I just think, of course there's stuff going on. Hey, if you guys are doing your job, there'd be stuff going on, it's a whole sign of stuff, you know what I mean, so. Uh, hey, um.
I'm just trying to leave, dude.
Oh, I thought. So, like, so, um, so you're a union official, right, or something? You get? Okay, but you like to be in charge and stuff. Oh, okay. All right, are you going?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember where I parked, because I got here, I've never been here before, and I forgot to park.
Really? You're so, you already took charge, though. Good, good thing, you should just, like, your first time here. You're bossier than I am. Really, if you get down to it. Is he really telling the truth? He's so funny.
Well, it should be like it's really true.
I don't know, man. I don't think. I mean, nobody thinks he really did. He doesn't know where his car is. There's the car, let's see. They got their little signals, their little ear things. He's not looking for his damn car, is he? But it's his first time here. What is with that guy? Is that saying his first, how can this be his first time here? That doesn't make any sense. It's not his first time here. Oh, he's gonna sneak in the back door, check it out. Now he's getting his keys ready or something. Go around the other side, I won't get it. Nope. He's really. He's looking for his car, you really are looking for your car, right?
I am.
That would make a great video, cause I'm totally suspicious that you were not, and that, you know, you know what I mean, that's like.
No, I know when I pulled up that I saw the.
Is this really your first time here, your first time here?
Literally my first.
Okay, so then, yeah. Have some, give me the benefit of the doubt, then. You know what I mean? Look at my YouTube and stuff. You know? So, so how is this your first time here, if you're like in the union and you're so? Oh, okay, where'd you come from? Oh, you did, that's all coming from up north, isn't it?
Nowhere.
You came from up north, right? But. Yeah, I came from Boston. I'm from Boston. Well, you don't sound like it, no one has an accent anywhere, though. All right, I'm gonna head upstairs a little bit. Oh, maybe. Or maybe not. Man. Oh, they must've told you not to talk to me, right? That wasn't from him. They have the dirty guys, and they don't wanna, cause they'll screw it up. They told him not to talk to me or something. Let me come for him, and then he has to react. And it's our guilty. I go upstairs real quick. It's so ridiculous, man, all things suck, man. They get, they get worried about stuff. It is, man.
It's all dirty here, scabs.
Hold on, I'm getting phone call.